Call the committee of the whole meeting for Monday, March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gaffino?
Here.
Trustee Curtis?
Here.
Trustee Lowery?
Here.
Trustee Gateley?
Here.
Trustee Carroll?
Here.
Trustee Martinez?
Here.
Trustee Salazar. Trustee Salazar.
All right, here.
All right, thank you. Any audience comments, Dave?
No, Mayor, I see no one.
All right, thank you. Trustee comments? Okay, item one for discussion, Fairview concept review, Steve?
All right, I was muted. Thank you, Mayor. Item number one on the agenda tonight is a concept plan, so just to stress that this is for an industrial development off of Fairview between Smoke Tree Lane and Sullivan Road. Once again, as a concept plan, it's essentially an opportunity for the board to give the developer feedback on whether this is a zoning change that the village board would be interested in allowing down the line through the formal process. And with that, Mike Toth will take you from there.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. I'd actually like to, you know, just avoid redundancies. Go ahead and allow the applicant to go ahead and do their presentation. I don't know if Ben Harris is on there or if someone from Ridge Line wants to go ahead with their presentation.
Hey, Mike, thank you. This is Ben Harris with Ridge Line Property Group. Oh, thank you for the time tonight. I'm real excited to present this development opportunity to North Aurora. Real quick on Ridge Line Property Group, we are a national development group, uh, company out headquartered in Atlanta, Georgia. We have six offices across the country. I run the Chicago office for all Midwest development. And so we have about nine million square feet under production right now of a total value of four hundred million dollars. And we're truly focused only on industrial development. So today, when I talk to you about this development, it's a twenty-six acre site. It is situated between Sullivan Road and Smoke Tree Lane. Uh, it is an assemblage of two properties. Uh, the bigger piece is twenty-two acres and the smaller piece is four acres. When we brought this development concept to Michael Toth back in January, there was a couple of initial comments, and the first plan was actually a single-load, four hundred thousand square foot building. And Michael's, uh, first reaction was, well, that's a really big building. And there's a couple of key concerns, first being the amount of truck traffic on Smoke Tree Lane. And additionally, the ability to create barriers of, of, of the trucks, of the truck court. So we went back to the drawing board and came back to this two-building design. See, Building A is a two hundred and fifty-eight thousand square foot, single-load building. It's called a rare load, rare, single-load. Um, and then Building D is a hundred and forty thousand square foot building, rare, single-load. What we try to do is we try to encapsulate the trucks into what's called a shared truck court. Uh, and then we also created berm walls as well to encapsulate the truck court and trailer parking. You'll see when you come in off of Smoke Tree Lane, we actually wanted to originally have, where you see the trailer stalls, uh, have stormwater detention. However, this finger is about eight to twelve feet above the body of, of, of the property. And so we had to put the detention in the middle of the property. And you'll also see that there is underground detention as well in the truck court for, for Building A. Really, what we're looking at here is, uh, you're probably looking at two, uh, two to four tenants per building. You'll, you'll see that many that we're trying to include are one per thousand parking or just above that. Today, we're seeing a higher office percentage for these four industrial buildings where, say, a few years ago, I was under running percentage between three and five percent for office use. Now I'm seeing between seven and ten percent for office use. So to accommodate that, you have more parking stalls for these office, for the office use or for these users. And so really what we're chasing after here is tenants that range between forty to sixty thousand square feet in Building B. And then in Building A, you're looking at users between eighty thousand and a hundred and twenty thousand square feet for that building who may have some, some trailer stall requirements. The clear height for Building A is thirty-six feet, clear height for Building B is thirty-two feet. And so the total size of the project is a little over four hundred thousand square feet. Mike, if you can go. So here, just more to show just one of the renderings of, of, for the property, uh, what we're trying to do is really create, uh, you know, a, a simple elegant design for industrial building, have three entrances, so two of the corners, one at the center of the building. Again, to allow for maximum flexibility to generate different types of users for this property increases its leaseability. Mike, next slide. Elevations just gives you just a little bit more in-depth look at, at the building of how it looked. I think that the, the middle elevation really gives you the full picture of, 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 of looking at the building where you would see the three different entrances going to that building. Mike, next slide. Here, um, really just a three rendering of, of the property. It gives you a visual of how we're really trying to encapsulate the trucks in the truck court where you wouldn't have any visibility from eighty-eight, from Smoke Tree or from Sullivan Road, uh, really to keep it encapsulated, uh, the sounds and the visual aspects of it as well. Next slide, Mike. So taking into consideration again of what Mike has talked to us, a concern is about encapsulating, um, the truck courts along with any trucks on the property from the hotel. And so here, what we're doing is we're building out, uh, an eight-foot-tall berm wall that we're gonna put an eight-foot, a six-foot-tall fence on top of with trees and shrubbery to really encapsulate, again, uh, this development from, from the naked eye, from the hotel and from any visuals off eighty-eight. Mike, go to the next slide. Um, and this is a cross-sectional view, so the top picture is the view from the hotel looking at, 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 at the truck court. Or sorry, the trailer stalls on the other side. Um, as you can see with a foot, uh, a foot berm wall and a six-foot fence and the trees, you can't see the trucks, the top of the trucks from, from, uh, from the hotel. Next slide. So what, what I, what I understood is that this, this development has had multiple industrial developers take a look at this, but all the traffic, cars and trucks were coming off of Fairview Drive on the Sullivan Road. And I heard, um, that, that, that has been an issue. And so by acquiring the four-acre piece, what that does is it allows to create a greater flow and keep the trucks on the north side of the property on Smoke, Smoke Tree Plaza. So the way that this is going to be set up is that trucks and cars will come, will come off of Lincoln Way Street on the Smoke Tree Plaza and into their project. And then cars only will be able to access the site via Sullivan Road on the Fairview Drive. And what we can do is we can put a clearance bar over a Fairview Drive, over a Fairview Drive to make sure that no trucks come on Fairview Drive down the Sullivan Road. But this gives you just a, a good visual of how we envision that the truck and car, uh, traffic and access to be on the site. Next slide. So what I, what I try to do here is just show a projection of, of the, um, of, of jobs. So you have a project size of four and six thousand square feet and then total office space of twenty-eight thousand feet. And so you'll see in the blue, a typical metric that you'll see is office space, one body for two hundred square feet. So we're projecting around a hundred and forty-two jobs in that office space. And then a rule of thumb is about point seven-five bodies per thousand square feet in the warehouse space. So that comes to two hundred and eighty-three jobs. You're looking at, uh, potential, if you have the full project lease, around four hundred and twenty-five jobs for this project. Then I took, just looking at wages too, generated wages for this development. So I took the, the middle number between, uh, for the office, so between seventy, eighty, eighty, hundred and seventy, two hundred thousand dollars, you're looking at, uh, at eighty-five. That's where it came up, the twelve million number. Warehouse wages on average, fifteen bucks an hour, you're at eight. And then manufacturing, if you do get a light manufacturer in this facility, average wages are between seventy and eighty thousand dollars, so I went with seventy-five. Except to twenty-one million dollars. So you're looking at, at use where it's really warehouse and distribution. You're looking at projected wages around twenty, twenty-one million dollars. Now, this light manufacturing, you're looking at thirty-three million dollars of projected wages from this project. And then you go to the next slide, Mike. So what, what I try to do here, and I know, um, you know, I've done this enough times where industrial real estate does have a negative stigma. It's, it's a big box with trucks and traffic, but I, there is an economic ecosystem generated by industrial development. So you do see increased property values. Uh, today, there's, there's, there are literally billions of nine twenty dollars on the sidelines right now to buy industrial real estate, which pumps up property values across the board. Uh, as I, as I showed, we're looking at four hundred and twenty-five new jobs. So when you're looking at new jobs, what does that mean for the community? Well, you're gonna get sales tax off of gas and vehicle expense. You're gonna get sales tax off restaurant, retail, grocery sales. Potentially can get sales tax off of e-commerce, non-channel sales, if you can show point of, point of sale at, at the, at the building, along with entertainment, sales tax. So there is, there is, it does touch different points across the board. One thing I didn't talk about is the types of users that we would foresee. When you're going with the smaller building designs, you're gonna see users that really is more office-centric, that's gonna have a warehouse component where you're looking at just trucks of, you know, one or two per day, um, definitely lower than ten trips per day, um, at, at the site. So, um, taking that into key consideration for, for Smoke Tree Plaza, um, and, and the wear and tear on that. Also, we're looking at, you know, you got biotech, technology, uh, strong growth there, strong growth in automotive parts, strong growth in home sales. So we're seeing a lot of money spent now on home improvements, exterior home improvements. Also pet supplies, pet food, uh, is also a big, big growth market right now with the, with people buying more pets during the COVID era. So those are the types of users that we foresee in this project, and we're excited to present this opportunity to North Aurora. And, uh, we'd love to get feedback from, from, uh, from the village and, and see if there's any interest for us to move forward with this development.
All right, thank you, Ben.
I like the development.
Just go ahead and say a few things. At first, I want to thank Ben and Ridge Line and his group, um, first for taking into consideration my original comments. I was definitely far removed from the first concept plan. Um, you know, when you're containing the trucks in the site, you're alleviating the need to have them. That point adjacent to the truck courts, adjacent to the, you know, the commercial users and almost some of the residential users somewhat to the south and to the west. So I want to thank you for that. Also, thank you for putting together a very detailed concept plan. It's rare that I've received a concept plan that much detail, so thank you. Few, few items for consideration. Again, one of my main concerns originally was the, the truck traffic, which they've done with the, the contained courtyard. There would be a few actions associated with this. Um, you know, mostly the properties off of Fairview Drive, which I understand right now is Village Right-of-Way, that at some point in time might have to be vacated. But that property is zoned in the ER district, which is the state residential. And it's in that holding pattern zoning because in two thousand and thirteen, um, the agricultural district was removed and it was placed in a default pattern. And also to the property, which is shown on Smoke Tree Plaza here, adjacent to the movie theater, which actually is owned by the movie theater. So they would be part of the sale. That property is in the B-two district. So the items that would be required for this development would be a special use for a PUD to allow for the rezoning of the property, most likely into the ORI district, because that allows the warehousing distribution use as a permitted use. Would require site plan approval, would require a plat. Um, so there would be some zoning items that would need to come through, and it would be done through the public hearing process. So it would be a full plan commission review, also to the board would have the ability to weigh in as well. And it would be a PUD agreement. So if there's anything specific to the development of this property, uh, it could come up through that review process, which we've seen now, um, using the Opus ID eight corporate park as an example of what that process looks like. But, you know, as, as a whole, the comprehensive plan does recommend office industrial for the property and doesn't sinuate industrial uses for that general area. Um, you know, you have Dart Warehouse to the northwest there, is accessing Smoke Tree Lane, Smoke Tree Plaza to, um, thirty-one is access to eighty-eight. I did put a comment in the staff report relative to the traffic going onto Smoke Tree. Again, I think through the PUD process, there, if this was to move forward, there would have to be some sort of prohibition through signage that's strictly enforced, keeping any truck traffic off of Fairview onto Sullivan Road. I believe Sullivan actually in that area is controlled by the city of Aurora, so we'd have to have conversations with them as well regarding that. Just the amount of truck traffic, because again, we don't have a, we don't have a traffic study at this point, uh, which is something that would be required, which is similar to what Opus had done through their development as well. It's something we'd need to further investigate. Um, if you recall, you know, more, you know, around, you know, five to ten years ago, there was a considerable amount of funds expended towards rehabilitation of Smoke Tree Plaza, uh, which was privately held. It was dedicated to the village and redone. So, um, just the area of sensitivity there, given the amount of work that had to go into that, and just ensuring it's long-term viability as well. So that's what I have to say right now. We're just looking to get feedback on the plan in general, and if there's anything specific of the board, you know, wants to bring up, now's a good time. Thank you.
I have one, actually two questions, uh, but they're related. One is, uh, to the west, there are some residences. How far away are they? Do you know, Mike?
I don't know specifically how far. Um, it's not shown in the plan here, but what you were looking at on the top of the plan where it says railroad tracks is you had the, the railroad right-of-way, then you have Evergreen Drive. And then you have the residences, who's, I believe, rear yard, but that, um, yeah, that, but that space on Evergreen. That is actually the city of Aurora.
Okay, okay.
I, I think what Mike's talking about, isn't that, um, commercial? I think there's like a dentist office and a photography studio. Are those residential?
Yeah, to the south, yeah. To the south, there is some, there is some residential peppered in of Sullivan Road. It is predominantly, uh, commercial. Uh, Fairview Dental, Feltes, you have the, um, IBW building of Sullivan there. There are, there are a few remaining residential, um, properties left, but that area of the comp plan is calling for retrofit into the commercial district. As we've seen with the dental or the veterinary dental clinic, uh, we're seeing a lot of adaptive reuse on Sullivan Road, moving away from residential to commercial.
So, um, so that whole strip there then, is it, um, is commercial use allowed? So if somebody would want to transition from a residential into an office building, is that currently allowed?
Yeah, there, there's a mix down there, B-two, OR properties and a few R-one properties remaining on Sullivan Road. We're trying to bring into some sort of conformity. It is sort of a salt of at this point, but we're looking to bring everything consistently. Yes, commercial, uh, users, you know, are allowed of a Sullivan Road.
Then I'm, I'm not too worried about that because the highest and best use for those properties is clearly going to be commercial or office. So I don't think we're gonna have a big impact on residential use. Um, I do like this development as compared to the other developments, uh, which, which does back to commercial, to residential property. I, you know, this, I think, is beautiful. I like how they did the birmingham, the fencing. Uh, like you had mentioned, Mike, it seems like they put a lot of thought into being a good neighbor with this project, and I'm happy to see that.
I have also.
Go ahead, Mark.
I, I like your idea. It's gonna create some decent paying jobs for the community and bring it to. So I, I think, plus, I do believe it's the next project.
I had a question on traffic. Uh, you said that their trucks aren't gonna be allowed to use Fairview out onto Sullivan. How in the world are they gonna make that turn off of Smoke Tree to get onto, uh, thirty-one? Cause it, it stops, then you have to cross traffic and you have to go to that stoplight coming out of the movie theater. How is a semi gonna get around there and in rush hour traffic?
Yeah, so Smoke Tree was actually designed, if you look in that area of, um, thirty-one at the theater, um, there are mountable curbs also to that area. If you'll notice, there's quite a swing. If you're going, as you come, as you're coming, if you're coming southbound from Smoke Tree, you'll notice it moves west before it moves back east again. Uh, it was designed because you, you do have traffic coming from dart container. Uh, they do utilize that road. So the geometrics were actually established for, uh, that in mind with the truck traffic. Um, you know, if you're talking about the specifics of how to get out of the site into Smoke Tree Plaza, that hasn't been investigated yet, but that would be part of the traffic study that we would, uh, require to be part of that.
Yeah. I, I, I mean, that's gonna be an issue, I think. They're gonna have to turn left, stop at the stoplight, and then turn left to get on eighty-eight again. And if you, if we're talking about more than one semi at a time, that's gonna be a huge issue. Not to mention, how are the semi drivers gonna see a car coming southbound on thirty-one that might turn right into the movie theater? And they're gonna be facing the same direction. I mean, I, I would like to see like a no right turn then on thirty-one so that, that car doesn't get smashed by a semi trying to come out. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, you know, and again, it's speaking to the current environment. I'm not sure what the movement is. So what, what the traffic study will tell us is it'll have sort of the, the, the background noise, if you will. What, what is the current state or what does the traffic counts currently for that area, and part of which might include semis? And what they'll do is they'll take that use and they'll, they'll, they'll plug in the additional traffic. So you, you'll get a sense of what the current environment is. And then also too, what would be added as part of the development based upon, you know, the, probably the warehouse use. Uh, we can sort of do rough calculations based upon Opus's traffic study and taking a percentage of the square foot for what they had done. Um, you know, being, you know, half at this point, we can sort of hypothesize. But, you know, as part, going into the public hearing process, a full traffic study would be required at that time too. So, you know, what we're gonna do is take a look at that as part of staff's recommendation and moving forward with it are the results of the, of the traffic study.
Do we know? Do we know how many trucks that'll generate a day based on the square footage of those buildings?
I don't, yeah, I, I, I have to go back and take a look. I don't have any of that information from a traffic study. Again, I'd just be hypothesizing. I don't, I don't know, Ben, have that, have you guys done any preliminary traffic studies or?
No, you know, a traffic study costs about ten thousand dollars, uh, to, to do a full-blown traffic study. And, and Mike, uh, you know, I think, I understand taking, um, square footage, I do a percentage of the Opus project. But the Opus project is a significantly different project than what I'm proposing. Uh, there have cross docks, which is designed for more high-throughput truck traffic. And this is, this is rare single-load, small buildings, which is, is significantly less truck traffic. I did watch, uh, but I stayed, uh, on Smoke Tree at the movie theater for about an hour and just watched the dart trucks coming in and out, and it seemed that they had no, they had no issues, uh, coming out of Smoke Tree. That was a concern that I also had, uh, looking at the, at the development. But, uh, it seemed to be a non-issue for the trucks when I washed it for, for dark container. But, uh, I, I do not have, I don't have truck counts. It'd be a, a study out, out of the paid, you know, uh, ten thousand dollars for and give you a full-blown comprehensive, uh, uh, traffic study.
Yeah, and that's why we would, we would require that moving forward.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Go ahead.
Good.
Yeah, no, we, we, and we would, I mean, that's, any development that we, that we've, we've, we've done, we, we had to produce a traffic study. And so the consultant that I use is KLOA. It's the same group that produced the traffic study for Opus's development. They're probably the best in the business in Chicago. Uh, and so, you know, those, those reports are almost two hundred pages long. Uh, so that, that's what I would, uh, that's the group I would go to. And I would, you know, happily spend every, you know, the required amount of money to produce that report.
Yeah, what, and what, just, just for information too, Dave, if you don't mind pulling the site plan up real quick, what, what it is, is that, um, what he had mentioned regarding cross dock is, if you look at the site plan. Yeah, thank you, Dave. It, look, you see the trucks, um, there in right, the loading zones, those are the areas, basically white there. You don't see it on both sides of the building. So as, what, what Ben had mentioned is that in the Opus situation is you have cross docks. So you have trucks loading and unloading from different various sides of the building. So that would not be part of that. That's why, you know, looking at this plan is that one thing we were concerned about was the adjacency to residential to the south. At Sullivan, we have the residences to the west. So if you notice those areas, uh, where it could be impacting potentially businesses, i.e. Tinseltown, um, you know, some of the residential, those are reserved for passenger vehicle parking and not for cross docks. So that was taken into consideration through our discussions through the preliminary plan.
I really like the planning.
With the plan itself, it's just my concern is where Smoke Tree meets, I guess, is that Love Dale Lane and?
Love Dale.
With the thirty-one, I'm, I'm looking at a Google map picture of it. It just seems like that's gonna, or could pose a potential issue.
Yeah, and we'll definitely take a look into that, Mark. I definitely, I've definitely shared your sentiment, and that's something that would be required moving forward.
But you said it was designed for that, right?
Well, yeah, Smoke Tree Lane, if you look at it and its configuration now, it was designed to get trucks from Smoke Tree, from basically on Smoke Tree, namely Dart. Moving it east to Route thirty-one. That's why you see the, the, the way it was moved, um, in front of Tinseltown there. There was a reconfiguration of Smoke Tree.
I really like the development. Um, I think it's, it's set up in a good spot. You see, you have all those railroad tracks in that, um, back area. I, I think it's the way they plan it. I, just like, um, our trustee said, um, they're pretty well-considered as far as all of the other developments around them. I really liked it.
Thanks. Trustee Salazar, any thoughts?
I think that given the use, uh, for all the uses that are around it, except for those one or two residences that are on Sullivan Road, it's all, um, you know, commercial use. And in this project, it's not really abutting any residential areas like the Opus project is. And I, I share what Mark is talking about in terms of, when you come out of, um, you know, the movie theater parking lot or off Smoke Tree Lane, oftentimes in rush hour, that traffic to the light, uh, eighty-eight to go left, um, if you're, you know, going northbound is backed up, you know, and cars are waiting to cross that Lovelace Lane, right, to get into that turn lane. And so you could see if a, if a truck was trying to get out there, they wouldn't really have a lot of room. So, but like Mike said, they'll do a, a study for that, but I can see what he's saying. It doesn't seem like there'd be, you know, it would be difficult in a rush hour situation for that truck to go all the way out and into the lane, um, when it's backed up there during rush hour. But I think that, um, the concept is good, and I think it's consistent with the, and would fit well with the rest of the development in that area.
Yeah, thanks. And thank you, Dave, for bringing that up there. You can see that, that sort of jog in the, in the road, how it moves. You can see it actually moves a little bit to the, to the left there. Um, that is actually part of, um, what is, what is the access to Love Dale Lane through Sullivan?
They're moving trucks in and out of there every day, all the time. I mean, I see it, so.
My only comment is landscaping, make sure there's enough, uh, between that and the Comfort Inn, you know, not just a couple of trees on Evergreen or something, kind of try to screen it. And I like the idea of jobs, and it's kind of a orphan piece back there anyway. So it's kind of good that there's something going on there. Any other thoughts? Okay. All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item two, Steve?
Thank you. Item number two is the Opus IEDA corporate park. This is actually the third time it's been to the committee of the whole. Uh, it's already been through the plan commission process. Uh, the last time the village board met a few weeks ago to discuss this, there was some questions about landscaping. That's the primary driver for why it's back at the Cow. And with that, Mike's gonna take us through it again.
And thank you, Steve. I'll go ahead and, um, start off and give Opus a chance to show their landscape plan in a minute here. Other three items primarily for discussion, Steve said this is the third committee of the whole meeting, um, after the plant commission public hearing that took place in January. At the last meeting, we had talked about, uh, some of the conditions and how they, um, you know, have an impact on the leasehold interest for Opus. There seem to be general support for removal of the conditions, uh, under the, under the premise that the zoning ordinance does, you know, address odor, um, and sound emissions. Also too, the landscaping does come into, play into that effect when you're looking at screening to the residential to the north. Uh, you know, so with that, it would be the rules of the conditions. Um, and if you look at the draft, uh, P V ordinance, those are shown, shown as strike-throughs, um, in red. So I make sure that was very clear and evident as to what was being removed. Um, and also too, the, the sidewalk was put in on a rural drive so that condition can be removed. And also too, if the, um, board found the landscape to be satisfactory, then, um, that condition would also be removed as well. Um, the landscaping plan itself would be discussed. Now, one thing about the landscape plan too, this, this is Building C. Uh, we're gonna start with Building A when the, allow it to do the presentation. Um, but, you know, Building C is gonna come back for future site plan approval. So it's, it's, it's good to note that you'll be mostly looking at the landscaping, uh, for Buildings A and B. Um, Building A being off Vorvalin Drive, Building B being the west or the eastern portion of the Valerian Golf Course site. Uh, so there's been a lot of attention paid to screening, um, in that area as well. What you see here with Building C would actually be coming back in the future, uh, for future discussion when the, as a condition of approval is Building C would require further site plan review. Um, and lastly, the. Um, and lastly, the um item that was put into the P U D was a building code amendment. And that was to reduce or increase the allowable travel distance from two hundred and fifty feet to four hundred feet. Um, which um is allowed by the two hundred, two thousand fifteen um building code, while we're currently on the two thousand nine code. And what that essentially is, is any point within the building, you have to be within a certain uh number of feet from an exit. Um, they have, they had since changed that from the two thousand nine, uh, which is now a change in the two thousand fifteen edition. Um, be due to three extending circumstances being the uh that the fire suppression be uh provided, that it be a one-story building and that there be a minimum clear height of twenty four feet, uh, which these buildings would have. Uh, and we have reviewed this with uh chief building inspector, also too with the village attorney. We just felt it was best to codify it in the code. Uh, so we wanted to make sure that we brought it back for discussion at Cal. Um, but I know primarily we'll be discussing the landscape plan. So, you know, I'll go ahead and turn this over to Opus and uh Josh Bauer, and they can go through the landscape plan.
Thank you, Mike. Um as someone mentioned, yeah, uh, our third time here at the committee of the whole, uh, we're really trying to get the landscaping right. We understand the importance of the buffering and the screening to the north to the residents. So um, we've put a a lot of focus and emphasis on that. Um, which you'll see in a minute. I think building A, which is on the on the screen in front of you. Um we talked about it at the last couple of meetings, but there the the focus here was the screening to the east um to the Euclid Beverage Parcel, and we've got some additional screening to the west. Um, and also tried to maintain the business park feel by including Parkland trees along Overland Drive. Um, but we, you know, we've we've talked about it, this particular property is not really of an impact to anybody. It's a a extension of the Tulley Park and Commerce um and the further south away from the residential. So we've really focused our efforts on buildings B and C, so we can flip to the next one. Um, is that, this looks like C. Yeah, there we go. Um, so what we've done and and um unfortunately, I don't have the last iteration of this plan in this packet. But if you recall, um, on the on the last iteration, we had a a good amount of evergreens on the north property line, but also um a a number of deciduous trees. And we had um mostly uh deciduous, actually no evergreens um south of the pond there. So what we've done is we've gone, we've gone back, we've worked with our landscape architect who who is standing by uh on this call tonight. And we've really uh added a number of evergreen trees and and replaced uh the contemplated deciduous trees to really screen this. So if you look along the north property line, we've clustered trees on the northwest proportion. Um, there's existing deciduous uh inter intertwined there, but we've put evergreens in all of the areas where there are not existing trees to screen the north property line the best that you can without having evergreens growing into one another. So then what we've done on this iteration, we've gone back, we've looked at everything south of the pond and added evergreen trees there in all of the locations where where uh that were not sufficiently screened uh due to deciduous trees on the north property line. So as you look at it, you can see that there's really no gaps um at all. Well, we've tried to space these out in a strategic manner uh at the direction of of the board um and the feedback that we've received. We've we've really put the emphasis on screening this uh with all evergreens. We understand the the concerns that you had about, you know, the winter months and whatnot. So um, we feel strongly feel that this is a, you know, should hopefully satisfy um, you know, the sidelines and and whatnot for building B. Um, if you want to flip to building C, it's going to be a lot of the same. Um, Mike talked about it just moments ago. We're going to have to come back for a future site plan approval here, but we still tried to capture exactly what we would contemplate for screening here. Um, again, there's a lot of existing trees on the north property line for building C. So we've put uh a significant emphasis south of the ponds here and and just screened it the entire, you know, most of the way, except for the the few locations where uh, you know, in green uh and then and then some all the way on the west um where there's evergreens. So we've got, we've got a huge row of evergreens there to block this and and screen this. And also uh, the last thing I do want to point out, um, we would be, you know, our goal um was to attempt to plant as many of these trees day one to to get growth. What we are able to do, we've talked to the contractor and and looked into future site grading and impacts. A lot of these trees due to, you know, the pond is only going to be extended kind of to that to basically the point directly south of the westmost evergreen tree. And all of that is going to need to be ripped up and great, you know, masqueraded. All of those trees would be ruined. Anything that got planted could be ruined. Uh, especially that stuff south of the pond. So the trees that are highlighted in green are trees that we uh we will plant day one. They will not be impacted because the pond will be built. Um, and those particular trees will further screen um building B and C from those residents. Um, as we've discussed, those residents for building C get further and further north, further and further away from the property. But we understand um that we want to maintain that screening and that focus. So we've uh we we feel that planting these trees day one will only enable them to to grow taller and help screen these buildings. Um, so hopefully, um, you're pleased with with our revisions to the landscape plan. And I'm standing by and John Ryan's standing by um with any questions or comments.
I think it's vastly improved. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Laura.
Yeah, I like it. I think that, you know, you guys have done everything you can as far as meeting everybody's expectations and making this project come through. I really like the row of evergreens. It's exactly what we were hoping to see just to buffer some of the noise and uh aesthetics of the traffic out there. I really hope that the uh homeowners back there, you know, now that you guys have done everything we can possibly ask you guys to to fit uh everything in a nice uh in a nice way for everybody. So uh, thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee Martina.
I'm pleased with the way you did it. I think the way that it staggered, like you say, where the deciduous trees are behind that is are the evergreens. And I I agree. I think that you've you've delivered on exactly what we asked you to do.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else?
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, me too. Looks great. Thanks for taking our uh, I guess, advice and direction and going up with that. So we want to make it a win-win for everybody. So yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Mike, anything else?
No, you know, I I think that uh clear, just so we're clear that in in building C, that line south of the pond, again, that would be put into part of his construction because as Josh had said, that we masquerading efforts. But again, there will be no building there. So as part of the site plan approval, they will have the landscaping on there. And the way they they couldn't get occupancy or final occupancy to the landscaping's done. So uh, that's definitely something we understand is an area of concern. So we'll be monitoring that as we move forward with the, you know, permitting and site plan for a lot uh building C.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, thanks. Um, item three, Steve, outdoor dining.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number three on the agenda tonight is uh just an overview discussion about outdoor dining programs uh for the businesses during the COVID pandemic. Uh, you might recall, a comment was made by a village board member a few weeks ago, and and you asked, uh, as the mayor, you asked to bring it back to just kind of give an overview of where we're at in the current climate with uh dining outdoors. Uh, so as a reminder, the staff was actually looking at a outdoor dining reimbursement program in the fall of twenty twenty. Um, at that time, it would have been a program that would have reimbursed businesses for trying to keep uh their outdoor areas open during the wintertime. So uh when there was phase three and no indoor dining yet at that time, uh, what we looked at doing is basically reimbursing direct expenses for things such as tents and and heaters and things that would have been directly correlated to um trying to stay open outdoors in the wintertime. Uh, some of the concerns that came up during that was that there was a small number of dining establishments that seemed to be either interested uh or the fact that there was only a small number that might even be um able to have an outdoor dining area, so to speak, out of the group of restaurants that we had in town. Uh, King County was also creating a program at the time where they were refunding and and providing funding to restaurants and and businesses of dining establishments. And we didn't want to be duplicative in our uh awarding of of funds to that age, uh, to those businesses. And then also, one of the concerns was is that there was a situation where the state guidelines had very specific ways that you could have outdoor dining. And one of the concerns was that businesses would have outdoor dining but not follow those stipulations, but then uh want to be reimbursed for their expenses, though they didn't actually meet the state guidelines for outdoor dining. Ultimately, we ended up going back to the board towards the end of the year. The village board determined uh the way to give dining establishments a more um basically more uh involvement to uh to incorporate more of them. Uh, the board decided to refund all of the liquor licenses for the class A, B, C, which are the restaurant classes. Uh, J, which are breweries, and T, which is tavern licenses. And they rebated those for both last year, uh, I should say this current fiscal year and the uh the new liquor license that just went into effect March one of this year. So last year's and this year's together, those two years for an average business in these categories would be between three thousand and six thousand dollars per establishment and refunded liquor licensing. As of right now, we stand in phase four, uh, where we are allowed to have indoor dining again. I thought what would be a nice way to kind of go through the overview too is we had a conversation about executive orders uh a few weeks ago. And what we decided was to kind of show the board where we're at with our executive orders as far as how they help uh businesses with dining uh during COVID. So executive order one in your memo tonight, the first one that was issued, uh, the brief of it is that was the one that allowed businesses to deliver liquor to homes and sell it uh curbside, primarily beer and wine. These were uh establishments that were allowed to have consumption on premises, uh liquor licenses. Uh, once again, they were allowed to deliver liquor to people's homes, and they were also allowed to do a curbside. Uh, that ultimately, um, the state ended up passing a state act, uh, public act in June. So that is actually, in fact, not necessarily under a general order anymore, but now a state law. Um, and it doesn't expire until June second of this year. So that is still in effect. Um, outside uh dining was the executive order number two that we issued. And that was to allow businesses to expand both their existing outdoor dining areas or any business that did not have an outdoor dining area. It gave them the ability to extend their dining into um outdoors, into parking lot areas and parking spots that were adjacent to their businesses. Uh, this is still in effect. Uh, right now, it it's under the gubernatorial order. Uh, and it is in effect until there's a hundred uh percent capacity indoors or when we repeal this as a village. Um, as of right now, though there is indoor dining, there are still restrictions on the amount of tables and space and social distance requirements. Um, so I do not believe and and the attorney does not believe that we are at a hundred percent capacity indoors at this time. In executive order three, that was an extension of the first executive order. This is where the state um decided it was allowed to uh transport and sell curbside cocktails. So instead of beer and wine, as long as they were in tamper-proof uh containers, this is where you could sell margaritas and other mixed drinks uh via delivery or curbside. That is also set in that new state law that was approved last summer uh after we had issued the executive order, and it is due to expire as well on June second of twenty twenty one. And then the last executive order we issue uh extended the outdoor dining hours. At one point uh when we had these eh uh extended outdoor areas, so to speak, um, there was a limitation of ten P M for when an establishment could actually be open um outdoors. We ended up uh matching what our supplemental outdoor liquor licenses allow, uh, which means that any establishment that has these outdoor areas could basically sell till midnight on Friday and Saturday. Uh, and they could sell till eleven uh P M on Monday through Thursdays. Uh, so obviously, they gained an extra hour or two depending on the night. Um, that being said, as I said earlier, King County did have a grant program. They ended up um allowing businesses to get refunded for uh certain items dating back from March first uh twenty twenty to December thirtieth. Um, I don't know the total number of Northwood businesses. We looked at the list. It's hard to it's hard to see because sometimes the businesses um are they do their business under a different name, so it was hard to always find exactly which business lined up with the North Aurora business. But ultimately, we did see a few businesses take advantage of it uh that met the qualifications. And and that's where we're at right now. So we're in phase four, indoor dining is allowed again. Uh, people can go outside and have outdoor dining. Uh, we have those executive orders in place. I guess the question now was uh based on uh what the the board bringing it up about a month ago was, is there anything or any thoughts or questions uh that you have at this time?
Well, I I would like to say I think we need to do whatever we can do at this point to get out of the way and let the businesses get back to uh doing what they do best, which is servicing their customers. So anything that we're doing now that is on top of what the state is mandating, I'd like to see us, you know, give them a little bit more freedom. I mean, like you said, we're in phase four. Um, do I think we need to give more financial assistance? I I mean, I think there's so many other programs that were available at the federal and state and county level. Um, you know, I think we did it, we did our part with the liquor license and refunding them. But, you know, for me to say that we should be going above and beyond, I mean, there's so many other types of businesses besides restaurants that were impacted that we are not offering any assistance to, uh, like, you know, gyms and and certain stores and other things that had to be shut down. So, you know, I'm very proud of what we've done as a village and and offering the assistance with the liquor license and right now, I'd like to just see us get out of the way and let's let's let our businesses get back to to, you know, making money and servicing our our village.
I agree with that, but you know, I strongly agree with that. I I I also think that just perhaps because we may be back to uh stage four or uh, you know, uh, less restrictions, that the businesses still have a uh, a hard time recovering for almost a year, right, of lost business. So if by any chance extending our um our, our uh, uh, extending the the courtesies that we we ended up going through and granting for them to uh perhaps, you know, um sitting people outside or things that would not be normally extended to them. They may be able to help uh their businesses. I would, I would like to perhaps do that if if even if if we're back to a normal time. Uh, just to make sure that those businesses can perhaps recover some of the lost business that they have experienced over the year, um, if if it was possible.
Uh, to your point, trustee Martinez, uh, looking at the executive orders uh and talking to attorney Drendel about just where they stand as far as state statutes overriding our local control to some degree. Um, obviously, the ones I read were all opportunities to uh give businesses more uh chance to have customers during a tough time and extend their uh their current situations uh beyond our current codes. What, when Kevin and I talked about it, I think one of the big things you have to watch is we just have to keep an eye on the timelines. Right now, those two uh executive orders, one and three, that we issued regarding delivery of liquor and curbside liquor, they do have an expiration date of June second. So that's something where we'll have to keep an eye on. Uh, but certain things like that are only allowed because the state allows them. So we sometimes don't have the authority to uh provide things unless the state liquor code allows it. So in those regards, we'll keep an eye on those. Uh, the second one is one where I think we have some more control, and that is the one that allows the extended outdoor dining areas. Uh, that to me is falls more under zoning than it does liquor. Except I'm sure our attorney will say it does have implications of serving liquor outside of a specific area because the state liquor code does require um certain limitations on where you can sell liquor. So those are things that we will definitely keep looking at as as these timelines start to get closer and closer to full opening.
I basic, I'm sorry, uh, we basically have to go based on what the state mandates, no matter what, even if we would have liked to extend them or continue to grant an extension of those hours. If the state says this is it, we're back to normal, we have to take steps back on it, correct?
So every every establishment that has a liquor license has both a liquor license from the village and a liquor license from the state. Uh, so in that regard, each establishment has to follow the rules that are set by the state. A lot of our executive orders are granted because they were uh the state passed an executive order or a state law that allowed local municipalities to then approve them at the local level as well to match them.
I I I would really like to, I I Laura's points well taken that the restaurant industry is not the only industry that got hit hard during this. And it seems to And it seems to me that the village has made out very well financially in the, what was it, King County or whatever, in the getting the stimulus money back to the village back a few months back. And now we're going to get money under this third economic stimulus plan. I would like to see us pass that along. We're, we're in a very good financial position. And we had a lot of businesses that got hit really hard, not just restaurants, hair salons, gyms. I mean, I, what about the possibility of like a three-month moratorium for, for certain businesses on their water bill? Or something to that effect, something that's actually going to help them in their pocketbook climb out of this hole that's been created because of this. I don't know how much that would cost. I'm just throwing that out there as a possible idea. But I, I would like to see us pass it along to, back to our businesses that have really gotten hit hard.
To that point, that's a, that's a valid point. I was talking to our finance director before the meeting tonight, going over our budget review that's next. And that's one of the things that we did, you know, here that there's going to be a third stimulus. But as of right now, there's some restrictions on the money and what they can be used for. So what we're waiting for is we don't have the guidelines yet, but we will, that will tell us exactly what that funding can be used for. And of course, if it's meant for certain programs, that is something we will definitely look at.
I, I would like to just comment. I mean, Mark, I see your point wanting to be benevolent, but it's not our job to pick winners and losers. And the village did take a hit as far as a reduction in taxes and income tax because of these businesses being shut down. You know, and again, there's federal programs, state programs, countywide programs. I think we've played our part with the refunding of two years worth of liquor licenses. But I just don't think we should be going beyond that because now we're picking, we're picking winners and losers. I mean, you're going to have some businesses that use a lot of water, some businesses that don't use a lot of water. I mean, I, I think it's well intentioned, but I, I just, I think that's, that's not what we're here to do.
I think we've done a good job of getting out of the way and working with all of our businesses. So frankly, I, I do believe that staff has done a great job of proposing some of these items and in the executive orders. So I, I'm thinking that Steve, you're on point about waiting to see where this next stimulus package gives us some, you know, can wait and see what programs are available. But as far as what we've done, we've won, as far as I can see, my, my opinion that we've done plenty of work to help businesses.
Anybody else?
Oh, to clarify really quick and Bill, you can jump in if you, if you want. But as far as the third stimulus goes, because we don't know what it is right now as far as the exact guidelines, we have a very loose interpretation right now that was given to us by the Illinois Municipal League. It kind of laid out which categories would be allowed to be spent in. It sounds like this is something that's going to have to, when we get all that information, that's something that we will definitely pass along to the village board. So you are aware of what money is available and what it's intended for. And then we can determine how to, to use it at that time.
Excellent.
Steve, would you mind, I, I hear, and because I'm, I'm new on the board, I hear that there was relief given to those businesses that have liquor licenses and those fees were waived, excuse me, for a period of time. What, was there any other type of relief given to any other businesses in the village?
We, this year we did, it's, it's fifty dollars a business, but we did waive everybody's business registration.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to know what else was involved.
My thought is I agree with trustee Gately and Curtis kind of that. I think some businesses are doing fine. I think I talked to one restaurant and they had the record year last year. So just depends where they got relieved. Some got the PP, whatever that was PPP money. Some got stuff from the county. So I think, I think we've done pretty well. The problem is like trustee Carol mentioned about all these other businesses, oh, I mean, that come across fairly everybody. I think we thought of restaurants because they were shut down, you know, but a lot of people have taken a hit. I can tell you that. So, but I think we just stay in the course. I think, kind of see where next round goes like trustee Gately says and go from there. Mike, any comment?
I'm, I'm in complete agreement with trying to help the businesses stay alive, you know, and everything we've done, I think has been a very good gesture towards helping the restaurants and bars stay afloat. All I say is let's stay within the boundaries and parameters of good common sense and see, and try and be as much out of the way as business progresses and carries on with their own businesses. And let it, let it happen like it naturally would. The closer we get back to normal, the better off I think we're going to be. So those are my thoughts on it.
Okay, thanks. So we'll just monitor it, Steve, and we'll see how things move forward in the next couple of months.
Sure, absolutely.
All right, thank you. Last item, Mr. Hannah, or Steve, I guess, then Mr. Hannah.
There's not much of an intro to this one. This is our draft. This is the formal draft budget. As you know, at the last meeting, finance director Hannah took everybody through an overview of some of the items that were being discussed at the staff level. This is the actual draft budget being presented tonight. And with that, finance director Bill Hannah will take us through it.
Thank you. Is Bill out there?
He may be muted.
He is, it's showing him muted. There he is.
Sorry, I made a mistake there. I apologize. So we are going to walk through the budget overview tonight. If there's any questions, please let us know, like I said. And any one of us or department heads will answer the question. This is a reminder of our budget process. We began in December. We had our financial update on January 18th. We had a discussion with the operations committee two weeks ago on March 1st. The draft budget was finalized last week and emailed to the board. Tonight is our committee, the whole meeting to review that. We have, we will have follow-up discussion on April 5th. So if there's a question that you didn't think of or you thought of after the fact, we will have follow-up discussion opportunities on April 5th. Our official public hearing is April 19th. And we are scheduled to have the budget approved on May 3rd. So just a quick couple of points about our economic and fiscal environment that we prepared the budget under. As we've talked about before, we did a little better fiscally during the COVID economy than we expected. That was overall some good news, obviously, for the village. We executed the budget amendment tonight for allocating some of that funding for future capital projects and other vehicle equipment purchases. We're still seeing very strong development trends in the village, obviously Blink and Valley on the Fox, but there's been other mixed-use development, industrial, multifamily proposed. So development interest in the village continues to be strong. We've had total sales tax revenue growth. This includes our 1% and our new cannabis 3% tax. In total, has resulted in about a 20% increase in the current year. We anticipate that leveling off next year and we'll go over those numbers a little bit more. But overall, we are still monitoring a challenging traditional retail environment. We've talked about the increase in use tax collections to sort of offset, offset that as people do more internet shopping and some of those dollars come back to us via use tax per capita distributions. We had our sixth strong year, straight year of EAV increases and consistent new construction. Our capital funding has been increased with the new MFT transportation renewal funds and rebuild Illinois funds. So that's been a big help. And our 2020 census, we anticipate that being finalized in the next month or so. And we anticipate having increased our per capita revenues going forward as a result of that. So our budget is just under 25 million revenues, 29 million in expenditures. You see revenues over under just about 4.3 million. If you exclude our police pension trust fund, which kind of, you know, distorts things a little bit. It's about 6.2 million expenditures over revenues. We are using a lot of saved up funds and planning to use reserves to fund a lot of capital projects. If you look at our general fund, which is obviously our main operating fund, we have about 12.9 million in revenues and expenditures. And at this point in time, the budget is, as presented, shows revenues over expenditures by about $59,000. This chart shows all our funds that are budgeted in the draft budget. Obviously, the general fund is our main operating fund. And then we have our capital projects fund, water funds and various other funds as well. We talked a little bit about personnel adjustments two weeks ago at the operations committee meeting. We are continuing to propose staffing in order to meet our service demands. And as we've talked about in the past, achieve what we call more consistent, effective staffing levels. We're doing that this year by proposing two new public works labors, one in water and one in streets. That'd be about $75,000 annually, including benefits. We're looking at hiring a new planner position. We have not had a planner other than a director. And this would allow us to have more assistance addressing long-term development challenges and utilizing current staffing. And you estimate a cost that position is about $80,000 a year. We are going to take a slight pause in recruitment for these new positions just to ensure there's no fiscal surprises over the next few months. So we're just going to monitor things and make sure that we're in the best position to move forward on those probably later this summer. Our pay adjustments range between 1.75% and 2% for our non-union staff. Police officers are under contract for one more year with a two and a half percent increase while our sergeants and public works employees contracts expire May 31st of this year. And are will be under negotiation. Our health insurance costs overall have been remain flat. We've seen a decrease in our HMO plan about 4%, which is really good. And our total health insurance costs for employees is about 827,000 next year. No other significant changes to overtime or other payroll costs at all. And our authorized staffing levels right now for next year as proposed would be 64 full-time and for regular part-time employees. I'll just take a brief pause if there's any questions at this point. Okay. This is a chart in our budget. It shows a five-year history of our staffing. And you can see we've had incremental changes over the last several years to try and address some of the staffing issues, you know, that we've had in each department. So this kind of gives you an overview of the authorized full-time equivalents by departments for next year and the last four years. As long as we're on personnel, a couple of comments on our police pension funding. As the chart shows, our contributions have increased over the years. We've been setting aside additional funds, about $750,000 over the last several years, over and above to try and increase our funding levels for the police pension fund. We've made a lot of adjustments and I'd like to tell people we have a very healthy assumption. So while our percent funding hasn't changed a whole lot over the years, we're at a very healthy, what I call healthy 59% funding. Our net pension liability is about 13.5 million and we're still maintaining our 100% funding policy through 2040 with 32 sworn full-time police employees. Our other employees are covered by IMRF and this just shows the contributions increasing slightly next year to $265,000. Our rate for IMRF hovers around 11, 12% typically for our non-sworn police employees that work more than 1,000 hours a year. This chart shows our total debt outstanding as of the end of each fiscal year shown. As you can see over the years, it's sometimes approached just under or over 15 million. As of May 31st of this fiscal year, our total debt is just under $9 million. And the only two debt issuances remaining are the sales tax-funded bonds for the police station and the water-funded bonds for various water improvements. We have no more debt as of January 1st, 2021, backed by property taxes only. We only have alternate revenue source geo debt. Just a quick note at the bottom, our police station bonds are scheduled to be paid off in 2029 and the water bonds paid off in 2032. And we continue to maintain our double A plus bond rating from S and P. So we have a lot of capital improvements next year. This doesn't list all of them, but some of the more significant ones. We have our 2021 road program, as we talked about before, funded between our capital funds, 700,000 and 1.2 million from our MFT funds using rebuild Illinois and transportation renewal funds. Our public works facility development project, we're allocating funds for site analysis and continued architectural development. We're looking to move forward with storm sewer improvement over at Tanner Trails. That project had a cost range estimate between 701.2 million. We budgeted it for 1.2 million, but we know there's some probably additional discussions to head to before moving that project forward. Orchard gateway design is included in the budget, funded with STP funding, substantial STP funds. But the design is ongoing, 244,000. We have our road PCI update. Again, that was approved at the last meeting, but that will be underway effective June 1st. On Ridge Road, we have some storm sewer maintenance, potential improvements to do over there with some root intrusion. Large enough of an issue that its budget is separately in the capital project fund for $100,000. Not sure if the Orchard Gateway Streetlight Replacement Project will be completed this year. So it's listed as a carryover project at this time out of the MFT fund. And then we had our Route 31 Airport Road Design Improvements. We applied for state funding for that project and in anticipation of moving forward at some point, design is included within the TIF fund for $65,000. Another TIF project is the sidewalk connections for 150 and carrying over the Riverfront Park improvements for 375. Any questions? Take a pause. Okay. This is the road program segments scheduled to be done next year. A lot of road segments off of Pine Creek subdivision is the focus. On the water side, we are looking at, hopefully moving forward with the completion of the new water tower next fiscal year as well as improvements to well five and well six as previously discussed. There are some studies to determine the best path, possible options for replacement or improvement of our water main crossing the river. Water lead line replacement study is also included, 25,000, as well as our SCADA, an assessment of our SCADA systems and the improvements that might need to be made for 40,000. One thing to note too, there is no water main proposed to be replaced for 2021. We are doing a, planning to have further discussions about what the priorities are for water main replacement. There are a lot of different areas that have been identified as potentially needing replacement over the next five to 10 years. So we are planning on having additional discussions and possibly something back in 2022 or 2023. Quick summary in our capital equipment and various vehicle replacements. We discussed this at two weeks ago at the operations committee. We are looking at replacing four police patrol vehicles. They would primarily be replacing older explorers, some of the first ones that were acquired. There's a possibility, some consideration for one of those might be a pickup truck, which could give the police department more versatility with certain tasks on a routine basis. Looking at acquiring a new five-year dump truck at Public Works for 170, replacing a code enforcement vehicle for 25,000 and getting a new vehicle for a new village engineer position for 39,000. We're looking at body camera options right now. 200,000 is probably a high estimate and I know there's some additional discussions and research to be done on that. But that is probably definitely on the high side going forward. We're looking at consolidating our police records data systems in the current Hexagon system. Replacement of our facility security access systems, starting that project at $50,000. Replacement of our facility security access systems, starting that project at $50,000. And various IT projects such as our exchange server licenses and document management systems. I'll just take a quick pause as well right here. If there's any questions. Okay. We covered these items briefly two weeks ago, strategic planning, analysis of police records workflow processes. Contracted police social worker and various other items looking to do next year that have some financial component to it. So going to walk through a few financial sides really quick. Our general fund, as we talked about, is 12.9 million. Revenues and expenditures and you see is composed primarily with sales tax, income tax and property taxes. Are equalized assessed valuation. We've seen six consecutive years of strong growth. And we're estimating right now about 591 million EAV for 2020. That's a 5.8% increase from last year. And we had a really good new construction number for 2020 as well, 4.5 million. So we're happy to report that we anticipate these trends continuing over the next several years. This chart shows our total village property tax rate as well as the property taxes. Levied by the village for various purposes and separately for bonds and interest. As you can see with the walk down we had in 2019 with the library debt and being completely paid off on 2020. That contributed to a 10% decline in our tax rate and 13% decline for 2020. We have two point, just under 2.6 million anticipated property tax extensions for next year. And you can see the property tax rate is now hovering below point five, around point seven. We talked about sales taxes a little bit. We're budgeting around 5.82 million next year, just a slight decrease of 1%. Like I said before, we're unsure, we anticipate some sort of walk down a little bit from some of the unique things we had happen this year. With people shopping more at essential stores versus non-essential, but obviously overall we had a strong increase this year. Especially when you include the the new 3% cannabis tax numbers in the sales tax numbers. On our income tax side, again, we had unusually significant increase in collections this year, but that was really because there was an extension in the filing. So essentially we had 13 months of revenue. Within a 12-month period. And obviously we don't anticipate that happening again. So we would anticipate a decrease in that for next year from about 2.05 million to 1.95 million. There's still some monitoring as far as LGDF. And but we think that we're going to have a slight increase due to our new census, once those numbers become publicly available, hopefully within the next couple of months. Building permit revenue, we seem to be settling in around 300, $325,000 a year over the last several years. So we feel like that's a good number to budget going forward. It's like we talked about before, there's working, we continue to see a lot of strong development trends within the village. Use tax, this is where money that's collected from people shopping online and collecting from out-of-state retailers has increased 26% over the last year. Really incredible that we only received about $300,000 in fiscal 14 and we're estimating that to be $900,000 next year. So really significant impact on our fiscal budget. We anticipate collections will continue to increase as people, you know, continue to do more of their shopping online going forward. That's why we're budgeting for an 11% increase next year. This just shows our general fund revenues and expenditures plus transfers out. Included for 2021 is the projected numbers via the budget limit. So even with those additional transfers out for capital and other purposes. We're able to make sure that we're staying in the black on an annual basis with our general fund. So this chart shows the dollars revenues over expenditures after transfers. The last three years, this year projected 21 and next year's 22. Shows our fund balance percentage as fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. As you can see, we were hovering around 68% the last few years. If things go as planned, that would go down to 62% at the end of 22. The reason it's going down is not that the reserve is going down, the reserve is going up. But since the expenditures are going up at a slightly higher pace, that's why that number goes down to 62%. Our policy is 40 to 50%. So we're above that threshold right now. And we're comfortable with where it's projected to be going forward. This shows just a chart of the revenues and expenditures in our capital fund. We've been able to transfer additional monies into the capital fund over the last several years. So we've been able to gradually build that fund balance in anticipation of significant capital projects down the pike. You can see next year, we are planning to spend up to 3.6 million. So we would be drawing that down a little bit. Even in that situation, we anticipate the fund balance for the capital projects fund to be around 4.5 million at the end of next year. And it'll likely be higher than that based on some projects not costing as much as we're anticipating at this point. So we'd like to have a minimum of 1.5 million in there at the bare minimum, but obviously with some significant projects in the future. We are looking to gradually build that up a little bit more so we can have a partial funding for some of those projects. Our water revenues have been very consistent over the last several years. We had a minor rate increase from 355 to 370 that was offset by a decrease in our sanitary sewer rate. We did see an increase in water revenues over the last 12 months from some larger users that were busier during this COVID economy than they were normally. I think we also saw some moderate increase with residential consumption as well with people being at home. So we're projecting 2.6 million in revenue. Same as projected for the current year. Water rates are still one of the lowest in the surrounding area. And this shows the water revenues versus expenditures. As you can see, our revenues remain very consistent year to year. We've had a lot of capital projects over the last several years that we've been trying to accomplish and get completed. So we anticipate that continuing into next year, we have 5.5 million in budgeted expenditures in the water fund for both operations and capital. And we are projected to show 4.1 million in unrestricted net position for our water fund as of May 31st, 2022. Unrestricted net position is the equivalent of fund balance for our enterprise funds. And almost last slide here, just a few other fun notes. We've talked about our MFT. We're looking at our salt budget in the MFT fund to increase to 300,000 next year. We have very various crack filling and pavement marking projects for 115,000 as well. And we're using our additional MFT funds to complete the Orchard Gateway Light Replacement Project. It's, it's really, it's really helped out a lot. Our revenues in the MFT fund are about 1.1 million in the current year. And we're budgeting that to be the same next year as well. So that's a stark contrast to a few years ago when it was about $475,000 that we received. In our liability insurance fund, our costs of coverage have remained the same the last four years, about 293,000. Don't know if we're going to see an increase based on recent claims experience or not for 2022, but that's something that we'll monitor. In our tourism fund, that's where we deposit our hotel taxes. They've decreased about $20,000 during this current year, but we expect them to be back to prior levels around 75,000 next fiscal year with 90% of those being paid over the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Nothing, no changes in our SSA funds, levy that are the same as last year, as well as the purposes for lawn maintenance, retain lawn mowing and stormwater retention basin maintenance. And our Tiff funds were estimated to receive about 535,000 in our Route 31 Tiff Fund. And we anticipate about 1.6 million remaining in the Tiff Fund at the end of the current year. And as the board is aware, we are in the process of moving forward with consolidation. Of the majority of our parcels under one of our three tips right now into one new Tiff. Our sanitary sewer fund, our major projects were completed. We do have money but budgeted for additional sanitary sewer maintenance and repairs and improvement with about 1.4 million in the sanitary sewer fund projected at the end of the year. So I'm done talking. If anyone has any comments or questions or suggestions on what we've gone through tonight. Appreciate hearing those.
I just have a question about the hotel tax.
Yes.
But we're still participating with the Aurora Visitor and Convention Bureau where we're paying them 90% of the taxes that we receive, correct?
That's correct.
So can we do some sort of an analysis to see, that's a lot of money. If we're paying about 75,000 a year, I'd almost rather see that go towards hiring another staff member or something. It just seems that I've never understood why we're paying the convention and bureaus center when these are private businesses who have marketing budgets. So I would like us as a board to take another look at that participation and see if we're really getting, you know, a bang for our buck. Versus taking that money and putting it towards something that we know will have a direct impact on the village.
Yeah, that's a good question. And I don't have the specifics in front of me, but I know there are some restrictive uses for hotel tax money, especially for non-home rule municipalities. Steve might recall more details than that, but I know that the purposes of the funds do have some restriction on them. And that could be part of the reason for the
Is this a tax that we are mandated to take? I mean, why not just get rid of it then?
The purpose of the tax is for tourism. And I think it's limited to that use. We, we could use it ourselves for tourism or we can give it to the hotels or some combination. But that's the purpose of it and it's limited to that purpose.
Do we even have to collect the tax?
No.
We would be giving our hotels a much more competitive environment. I'd almost rather say, why are we collecting a tax that A, we don't need and B, we're giving to somebody else. Specifically in regards to tourism. I mean, most hotel chains have a marketing budget. And if they want to participate in something outside of, you know, whether it's the convention bureau or whatever, that's something that they should be able to do with those funds, especially if we're no longer collecting the tax.
So to Attorney Drundle's point, I'm under the understanding that I believe the state requires if you have a tax. So trusty Curtis, I understand that you're asking if we have to have a tax and I don't think we have to have a tax. We do have an IGA, I believe with the Convention and Bureau Visitor Bureau. So we'd have to look at that. But as far as the 3% tax go, off the top of my head, I believe that's the maximum that the state statute allows for non-home rule communities. And of that 90%, it's always been my understanding, 90% of that has to be dedicated to tourism funds. So as Attorney Drundle said, if we collect the tax, it has to be used, whether it's us hiring somebody internally to market, you know, the community. Or giving it to the convention bureau, that funding has to be given to tourism.
But what I'm saying is this tax is ultimately paid for by the consumer. If we can just get rid of the tax, I'd rather do that than give it to a convention bureau that, you know, they're, they're not exclusive to North Aurora. We're a small fish in the big pond of who they, who they market. I'm just saying, if that's something we could do, we should at least take a look at the option of getting rid of the tax. Because again, it directly gets paid for by the consumer, not the hotel.
I have a question. If we give 90% of the tax to the tourist bureau or organization, what do we do with the 10% we keep?
It goes into the tourism fund, which is where we fund things like North Aurora Days. The purpose of the convention bureau, their mission has always been to attract people to the, call it the Greater Aurora area. The purpose is to try to drive people to events and establishments such as restaurants and dining that will make people want to stay in this area at hotels. So that's what they market. They have a very specific marketing mission. If that's something the board wants me to, you know, to have the director of the convention bureau give, come to a meeting and give an update, show the types of things they advertise, we can do that. Kevin and I can work on and get the exacts for the state law and what the requirements are as well.
Yeah. Well, one thought I'll share with the, with the board here is that we have to keep in mind that the revenue that is generated that we tax, the hotel tax is revenue that is from outside of the village. So it's kind of like a pretty good situation financially, I would think. To have that little influx of money regardless of what the amount is. That's my
We just had a conversation about ways we could help our businesses and that shouldn't just apply towards you know, a time of crisis or pandemic or whatever the, the issue is going to be, you know, keep in mind that I, I don't think we should take a tax just because we can take a tax, especially knowing that we're in really good fiscal shape. As far as the AVC BB, you know, if a business or restaurant or whatever wants to advertise with them, they're fully within their rights to go and take out with, at their own expense and advertise. I've seen their brochure. I get emails from them. I've seen their website. So if, for example, the turf room or any of our hotels, my place wants to advertise with them, they can do it on, with their own dollars. I just don't see why, why we are becoming a middleman with this.
Who, who is part of the Aurora Area Convention and Visitors Bureau? What other municipalities are, are part of that?
Off the top of my head, it's Batavia, us, Aurora. I want to say there was Oswego at one point, but I think they might've gotten out of it. So I can look that up real quick.
I, I would tend to agree with Laura that if we could give our hotels that are in town a little bit of a competitive advantage. Why not do it? I mean, that's, I, I just, I think that's helpful.
I would like to hear from the hotels if they think it's a value to them. I mean, we don't know how, if it's their get business, you know, driven to them from this. I mean, that'd be my first thought is do they think it's a waste, you know? We can talk all we want here, but if they're like dudes, why are you getting rid of it? Because it helped us. I mean, we really should find out. What do they feel? How do they feel about it? Does it generate dollars for them or would it be better in their pocket?
And Mark, according to their website, it's Aurora, Batavia, Big Rock, Hinckley, Montgomery, North Aurora, Oswego, Plano, Sugar Grove, New York.
I kind of like the idea what you said earlier, Steve, about getting him in and giving them, giving us an update. And I like Mark Gaffino's idea about how the hotels feel, what they feel is, you know, useful for them. So I don't, I don't think we should just rush into start, you know, not, not doing what we're doing in the past. I like to know how they feel. And I, and I think having visitors bureau come and talk to us to check in is a good idea.
All right. If the board wants, what I can do is I can, we can actually make it a town discussion and we can contact the hotels.
Sure.
Check the bureau and we can get all the state statute information in front of you at one time.
That'd be good.
I think it's definitely, it is definitely worth taking a look at to see if it is a benefit. I think that's a great idea. Mayor Gaffino to have the hotels, they're the ones who are charging it and see if they feel like it's, it's the best thing to get rid of it or not.
Sounds good. Anything else? Any other questions or thoughts? No, good job, Bill.
Yeah.
I didn't want to say good job. I felt it pretty, pretty easy to understand in the, in the slides that you did in a complicated subject.
Yeah. A lot of work there, Bill. Thank you. Okay.
As always, I would say that if you had any questions about the budget as well as you're going through it, you know, between now and the adoption of it in May. You know, feel free to give us a call and ask questions as you're going through it.
All right. Anything else tonight?
No.
Okay. Motion adjourned. All in favor? Say aye. All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, guys.